Fire evacuation announcement. There are two exits to this room in case we need to vacate this chamber. One immediately in front of me, to your rear, go down the stairs and out the doors into the grassy area. And the one to my left, your right, go through the double doors, take an immediate left, go through those double doors, all the way down the stairs and out into the parking lot. Kathy, could you have a roll call, please?
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Feely?
Mr. Grady?
Here.
Mrs. Suzak?
Here.
Mr. Serrard?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Chairman Neville?
Here. Okay. I think as all of you know, this special meeting is for a special presentation on security. And it's going to be, I'm going to present it, and then we're going to have questions and answers from the board's members of the Joint Technology, the Joint Town Council Board of Ed Security Committee. At this point, I'm going to go down front because there's a delay here, and it'll be easier to present it there. On behalf of the Board of Ed, I want to welcome and thank folks for coming to tonight's meeting. It's a horrific evening out there with all the rain, but we're pleased to have you here. As you know, the agenda has only one topic: safety and security in the Enfield Public Schools. This is the first of several public informational forums where members of the Joint Committee will update you on our work to date and share committee recommendations. Since this primarily affects the school side, we decided to have the first public information session on the Joint Committee's work at this school board special meeting. Kevin, Vinnie, and I served as the board member reps on the Joint Committee, with Donna filling in when Kevin's work, as it does tonight, prevented his attendance. I'll present a 15- to 20-minute PowerPoint on the committee's work to date, and once completed, provide you an opportunity for questions and answers from Vinnie, Donna, and I. And with that said, why don't we begin? Thank you. As all of you are aware, on December 14th, the unthinkable happened in Newtown, Connecticut. It forced us to look at school security through a different lens and rethink our feelings about school safety. Almost immediately after the tragedy, Enfield wisely set about to establish a Joint Committee for School Safety and Security. The committee's charge was to explore ways to enhance the safety and security of Enfield's schools and its students. We gave ourselves a timeline to accomplish this that would allow us to have recommendations ready for the 2013-14 budget process. The committee is comprised of three town council members: Carol Hall, Cindy Mangini, and Greg Stokes as the Town Council co-chair, and three Board of Ed members: Vinnie Grady, Kevin Feely, and myself as the Board co-chair. It also includes the Town Manager, Matt Koppler, Dr. Schuman, and Chris Dreszek from the school administration, the Director of Public Safety, Chris Bronson, Chiefs Farazza and Captain Fred Hall from the Police Department, and Chief Ed Richards from the Fire Department. We set a timeline for ourselves with the following benchmarks: have a needs assessment sometime in January, set priorities during January and February, develop a school security plan during January and February, update, give an update and recommendations to the Board and Council during the month of February, give an update and recommendations to a public forum, the first of which is tonight during February, March, and include recommendations and costs in the budget process sometime during the month of March. The committee's focus: the committee decided early on, we couldn't look at everything at once, it was just too big, and we wanted to focus initially on just the regular school day rather than on after-school or weekend hours. We felt the regular school day was when we had the highest number of vulnerable students, and the remaining times still need to be looked at, but we're going to be evaluating those as the committee continues its work. Committee's primary focus was to buy time for the Enfield Police to reach the schools. In our meetings with the chief, he repeatedly emphasized the importance of time in the security process. He said it could be your, time could be your friend or your enemy. He emphasized that whatever strategies we developed needed to provide sufficient time for the Enfield Police to arrive on the scene. Without this, in his opinion, there could be a number of deaths. He felt he could have Enfield Police at any school in town in a short period of time, and all he needed from our plan was to give him that time. Consequently, our committee focused on strategies that would buy time. We needed to recommend strategies that delay any intruder. In other words, we had to make it as difficult as possible for someone who doesn't belong in our schools to get into one of our schools. We needed strategies that ensure that we have sufficient communication systems in place for rapid notification of the Enfield Police Department if they are needed, and not just go with the traditional 911. We needed strategies that educate and train students and staff how to act in a variety of emergency situations. And finally, in case an intruder gets in the building, strategies to de-escalate and respond with force if necessary, that is, have a person on the scene to slow down or stop any person, the bad guy if you will, who is there for evil purposes until the Enfield Police can arrive on the scene. Over the past 10 weeks, the committee has met weekly for about 90 minutes to discuss and develop a plan to address the safety and security of our schools. On January 7, 2013, a statewide security symposium was held in Cheshire with representatives from just about every town in the state. Committee members attended and heard from the state and federal agencies about best practices for ensuring security in our schools. They were introduced to a systems approach, which is represented in the graphic on the next slide. This graphic portrays four key areas that need to be considered in developing a security plan. It's an ongoing process and not a static one, as we've used before. It focuses on prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response to a crisis, and recovery from a crisis. Our committee has broadly used this as an outline for our security plan. In the past, we had a plan that was a one-size-fits-all plan. It was put into place and practiced regularly, and it was developed in consultation with the police after Columbine and 9/11. However, it did not incorporate what public safety officials have learned from the most recent school shooting incidents. In our security meetings, the chief and his officers have shared what public safety officials have learned from this new type of school shooter: the active shooter. This is the term they have used to describe the Newtown shooter. Succinctly, this is someone who comes to a building to do harm. The only profile that they give for someone like this is that their intention is to kill as many people as they can, they don't want to negotiate, they expect to die in the event. And the graphic illustrates a planned format that, if implemented, can address pretty much any emergency, including the active shooter one that I just referenced. Prevention and mitigation, one of the steps in the plan, means taking all the necessary steps to prevent or delay entry into our schools by people who don't belong there. And it fits in with our focus on saving time and buying time. Our plan includes recommendations to conduct safety audits, and since every school is different and has unique issues regarding safety, Chris Bronson, Enfield's Director of Public Safety, put together a team that included Department of Public Works, Department of Public Safety, Enfield Police Department, Enfield Public Schools, and the Enfield Fire Department that went to each school and audited them and assessed them as to their security and made recommendations back to the committee. Many of the short-term deficiencies they found were addressed immediately; others are scheduled to be completed shortly or by the summertime. Our plan also recommends that we review and revise all crisis response protocols, making sure that they're tailored to the needs of each school. These are, in fact, mostly completed. Preparedness: this means being prepared to carry out a rapid, coordinated, and effective response in the event of an emergency of any kind. Some questions the committee considered: as we looked at this preparedness issue, what should we prepare for? A Newtown-type event? What are the odds that a tragedy like Newtown will occur in Enfield? Are there any guarantees that it won't happen? If it does happen, are we prepared? Prior to December 14th, most of us would have said the odds were just about zero that something like this would happen in Enfield. Since December 14th, I think we'll all agree that everything has changed. Statistically, the odds are probably a little bit higher, but still slim, that it will happen in Enfield. However, none of us can give you a guarantee that that's the case. The question is, is Enfield prepared if it does happen? When faced with this question, and we spoke about it a great deal, the committee felt we couldn't gamble on the odds. Instead, we needed to make recommendations to ensure Enfield was prepared for all emergencies, including a Newtown-type active shooter incident. In terms of preparedness, our plan provides strategies that develop communication and notification, both internally to alert everyone in the building that it's an emergency and externally to notify the police so they can respond. We also need to provide strategies that assesses and addresses liability issues and determine where we are vulnerable. This has already pretty much occurred through the audits, and most of it is either complete or will be done in the next few weeks. Additionally, the plan provides strategies for training and conducting drills, ensures that we will change from a one-size-fits-all to flexible action plans and strategies that staff can use in evolving situations, as those that occurred in Newtown. In Newtown, as an example, the building went into a traditional lockdown once they heard the shots and the comments over the loudspeaker, where teachers kept the kids in the rooms and hid them. I think as all of you have read, some teachers took their students away from the shooting and took them out of the building and essentially saved them by that action. Our plan provides for some flexibility on action plans to be determined by the events that they unfold and to educate our staff to respond that way. Response: the ability to respond and the amount of time it takes for that response in an emergency is critical. Some of the essential questions that the committee considered: how do we keep the wrong people out of the building? What do we do if someone does get in? And then, how quickly can the police be on the scene to address the intruder? Our recommendations to respond to all of these questions. And the final stage here is recovery. It's after an event. And the recovery phase may and often does continue long after the emergency responders and media have left. Our plan will provide for assessing student and community needs after any kind of an incident and planning strategies to return to normal after such an incident. And this could be any kind of an emergency. This kind of a plan that we're talking about can address pretty much anything from almost a weather event or hurricane or something like that, all the way up to an active shooter-type What's our progress to date on the committee? Well, the committee has made recommendations to the Board of Ed and the Town Council for the strategic enhancement of building security and communication. For building security and communication, safety protocols and emergency procedures, and the addition of armed security personnel. Many of these have already been implemented, with the remaining to be completed between now and the start of the next school year. In terms of building security, our plan provides for enhancing building entry protocols. I'm sure all of you have already experienced and understand the new procedures for entering schools. Although this has inconvenienced parents and visitors, the reason for the changes are obvious. At Enfield High School, we've even changed a decades-long tradition of crossing the parking lot between classes to reach your D-wing classes. Again, the reasons are obvious, and we greatly appreciate the understanding of our high school students in adhering to this change. I think all of us are getting used to it. We all have our IDs now. I forgot mine today. I had to give my license at Central Office. I won't forget it again. But I think we understand why we're being inconvenienced, and it's for a good purpose. Our plan also provides for hardening the perimeter of the building, basically making it physically hardened for anybody to get access to our building. This includes addressing physical plant issues, including all exterior and interior doors, windows, and locks. All of these, in each, in every school, were evaluated and addressed as necessary and repaired and/or added to. It provides for increasing the use of technology to facilitate greater building security, including adding buzzer systems, magnetic doors, and cameras to control access to schools and allow monitoring from both offices and remote locations. Again, most of this is already in place, or planned for and probably will be in place if it isn't there in the next couple of weeks. Finally, it provides for increasing communication, or increased communication. As mentioned previously, communication was enhanced internally to notify staff within the building and externally to notify the police. All of our radio systems have been updated and are tested regularly with the Police Department, and we have provided a variety of means for anyone in the building to notify staff of an emergency, as well as to notify the police quickly. Again, most of this is already in place. Safety protocols and emergency procedures: we're in the process of developing emergency training protocols for training all of our existing staff and revising all Board of Ed policies as needed to reflect these changes. Mr. Dreszek is in charge of this. He's our liaison to the Public Safety Director, and he'll be consulting with Chris Dreszek as the Public Safety Director when he puts these protocols together. At the same time, we're putting into practice a system to ensure these procedures and practices are monitored and carried out regularly. There's no point in having protocols and emergency procedures if we don't make sure that they happen, as they're intended to. Armed security personnel: the third part of our plan, designed to delay someone getting access to the schools, includes the addition of armed security guards. And since I know many of you will have some questions about this particular issue, let me explain our current situation and the rationale we used to make this recommendation. Currently, there are three SROs, shorthand for School Resource Officers. These are police officers that are trained to work in the schools. We have one in each secondary school, one at Enfield High, Fermi, and JFK. And we've had them there for probably 10 years plus, and they're very, very effective. They also share the responsibility to support the district's other eight schools. When we went into this whole process, we decided that there were no stupid questions, there was nothing here that we wouldn't consider and address at the table of the Security Committee. And so, a number of recommendations were made. One was to go with what we had and we were familiar with, which was to add SROs to the eight remaining schools. People were familiar with them. I think the staff there and the parents, they were well-respected and accepted, and we thought that this might be a way to go, and going with something that was familiar. As we talked to the chief about it, the Police Department made it very, very clear to us that it would almost be impossible to pull this off. Not because it wasn't a good idea, it was because it just weren't enough slots in the academy to be able to train these officers. Secondly, it would be prohibitively expensive, and the other thing is, we were trying to do this quickly, it would take, it could take up to 18 months to get these officers trained and out into the schools. And so, that's the reason that we put that particular recommendation off to the side. The second one was a recommendation that we looked at, a strategy that we considered, was to assign an Enfield Police Officer on a random basis to each of the eight schools who did not have SROs during the day. When we talked to the chief and the Police Department about this, they reminded us that for two weeks after December 14th, we had a policeman with a cruiser stationed at every building. And judging from the comments that the superintendent received and that we received, people liked that, they felt secure, they thought it was a good thing. The problem is, we don't have enough officers to carry it out. And going with overtime to do it would just be prohibitively expensive again. And in their minds, having somebody different all the time would not give the continuity that we needed to have there with the kids or with the faculty or with the public. The third issue is, the third strategy that was considered was to hire armed security guards for all schools, including those with the SROs. This was kind of a hybrid plan that was recommended by the Chief of Police, and it does have the consensus of the committee as a way to address that third piece of dealing with somebody who gets in the building. The idea would be to hire these folks, they would not be policemen, they would be trained security officers, and I'll explain some of the pieces to it in the next slide. Basically, these would be armed, uniformed security officers under the Police Department. They would work for the Police Department, and they would be trained by them. They would be recruited to the fullest extent possible from retired police officers, not necessarily just from Enfield, but from any police department where they were certified police officers. There would be some value added in terms of their relationship with the school, they would just not be standing there as an armed guard, their role would be as a greeter, probably similar to what we have at the secondary schools now on a temporary basis, where they would be kind of the face of the schools and greet, see the people, first person that visitors to the school would see, they would help them out, direct them, and so on. They would not, they would not have arrest powers, but they would have direct contact with the police, but no arrest powers to go along with them. They would be part-time, hopefully sharing, having two people share a position in a school over the course of a week. They would be, the whole program itself, we put kind of a sunset clause in it that we wanted to run it for two years, not forever, and evaluate it thoroughly to see, is it doing what we want it to do? Do we need to add to it, or do we need to delete it? Because maybe some things are changing with the state and the feds that would take over that responsibility from us. And the idea would be that if all things were equal and going well and on schedule, they would begin their duties beginning in September 2013. The next steps for all of us? We have state and national next steps, we have, the Joint Committee has some next steps, some of which I've already highlighted to you, and the Board and Council has some next steps to complete the security program. For the state and the nation, I think all of us, we watched the evening news, we see much discussion of new legislation and funding for school security initiatives, both in Hartford and in Washington. I think some of the ideas seem good to me, and I think probably some of my colleagues. The question is, I don't think anybody can tell us when and if this legislation will pass, or when, if it is passed, when it would be implemented. And I think our concern is what we have to do currently, because we have the kids now, not in the future. In terms of the Joint Committee, I told you initially that we were focused on the regular school day. We need to look at after-hours time with our buildings, whether it be athletics, or clubs, or dances, or all of the multiple activities that go on in school on a regular basis. We also need to look at monitoring of all the initiatives, with a complete review, as I mentioned in the previous slide, looking at everything that we're doing to see if it's working, does it need to be changed, or does it need to be deleted? And that would happen as part of that whole security plan, a monitoring part of the plan. The next steps for the Board and Council: we still have some work to do on continued perimeter hardening and strategies in all the school. Mr. Dreszek also has some work to do in terms of finishing the policies and the training protocols. And we need to finalize the MOU, or the Memorandum of Understanding, between the Board of Ed and the Town Council, as an agreement to carry out this plan. We also have some additional meetings coming up here, March 18. I think most of you know that the manager's budget presentation occurs on that day, and I think, although I don't know the costs that are involved in this at this point, I've just heard some numbers discussed earlier in the discussions, but he will be presenting numbers of what this will cost as part of his budget presentation to the public. There will be two special meetings, I believe, one for the Town Council, the Board of Ed, to review the Memorandum of Understanding and take whatever necessary action there is to take on that, in terms of that MOU. And finally, this is built into the plan, is to have another community conversation on school security on March 27th, where the whole committee will be there and make a presentation, and as we are going to do shortly, answer, take and answer any of your questions that you have about what the plan is, why we are recommending it, what goes into it, and any of the multiple details that I'm sure all of you have. Conclusions: in consultation with our public safety professionals, the Joint Committee has made some specific security recommendations to the Board and the Town Council, which we think will enhance the physical security of the building. It's going to provide revised security protocols for controlling building access, provide revised emergency procedures and protocols for handling pretty much any kind of emergencies, provide strategies and personnel to delay access to buildings, giving the Enfield Police Department sufficient time to arrive at the buildings, provide opportunities for continuing public discussion on security, and it can now receive budgetary consideration for the 2013-14 budget process, which was one of the original goals that we had in our timeline, was to have it be ready in time for the budget process. And finally, what we're all here for, it will ultimately, we believe it will ultimately enhance safety and security in all of Enfield schools.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You had said community conversation would be on 3/27, I believe that's, dates been changed? Is I correct? The 25th?
No, that's the date of our Board presentation on the budget to the Council. The one that was going to be on the 20th, that was switched because there is a building committee, community conversation, that they switched their date from the 21st to the 20th. So, we had to switch our presentation date to the 25th, which I believe, Dr. Schuman, you have, or you're getting out a notice to the...
We have sent out an e-vite and outlook, and we will get out something in the Board package this week.
Okay.
So, that's the Board's presentation of its budget?
Correct, correct. Okay. The 27th is a set date. We set it a couple of weeks ago, and I don't have the time and the place, but that should be coming out shortly. I believe we'll probably set that tomorrow at our meeting. So, at this point, I'm going to come back up to the podium here, and we'll start some questions here.
Did you jump off the presentation, right? Raise the screen.
Yeah, fine.
I didn't turn on. Sorry. You didn't change any information. It was like...
Peter, I'll get everybody a copy of that. I'll print it out and get it, do you want a hard copy, or can I send it electronically?
I'd like the hard copy. I'd like to look tonight, but you're doing that.
We just finished it up at about 5 o'clock, so I wouldn't have been able to do that. Okay. I think as all of you folks know, we scheduled this special meeting with one purpose, and that was to discuss security. We thought it was important to bring it to you and provide you with an opportunity to ask us questions. At a typical meeting, there's audience participation that happens, and basically, we don't respond unless we're responding in Board comments. And there will be Board comments tonight as well. But we thought it was important enough, and judging from the people that are calling us or that we're talking to, people have a lot of questions, and that's perfectly normal. I think, we've been talking about it for 10 weeks, and so I think we have a lot of the answers, and I think we're comfortable with the conversation. I don't think we're comfortable with some of the things that we've had to deal with. And I think that whatever questions you ask us, or whatever concerns you've had, we've agonized over them as we've gone through this process. These are emotional things. The whole issue of a school shooter or active shooter is a very, very emotional topic. The issue of Sandy Hook and what happened there still brings tears to people's eyes. And I think our concern here is to present our best recommendations to you, give you a chance to ask us that, and ask us any questions that you have. We will try to answer them as best we can. There will be some questions we won't answer, okay? If they have to do with direct security types of procedures that we're going to carry out in the school, we'd be remiss if we shared those with people. It's like giving information to people who might try to get into the building. We didn't want to do that. I guess it'd be, my comparison is, say, it's like installing a burger alarm in your house and putting the code on the front window. Okay? We wouldn't want to do that. And I think, please understand that we want to be as upfront as we can, but there will be some things that we'll say that we just can't answer. With that said, what I'd like to do is just, if anybody wants to speak before the Board, if you could go up, as the traditional process is, go up to Mrs. Alackey, fill out that sheet there, put down your name and address, and then, when I call your name, come up here, give your name and address at the mic, and we'd ask you to focus on questions that have to do with security, since that's the topic that we've got on the agenda this evening. And I'm going to ask Donna and Vinnie, because they've been on the committee with me, to answer the questions, and then, we'll probably set, looking at the number of people... the number of people, Dr. Schuman, you're going to be the timekeeper, how about we go about five minutes and just sit at that, okay? So, do you have a list for us, Scott?
Just one person, Pat Droning.
Well, that's easy. Pat, come on up.
Absolutely not. Long live the whale.
They may be back, you never know.
You never know. Pat Droning, 15 Boblin Lane. First of all, I'd like to commend the town council, the board of education for, for being proactive on, on trying to do something about school security. I mean, as you mentioned, Mr. Noel, I think we were all shocked by what happened in, in Newtown, back in December. And I think we always took the, the stance, it can never happen here. Well, it happened 50 miles away, so I think it really brought it home, and, and the fact that we lost so many young lives, I think, really affected us. So, just want to give you guys credit for taking the bull by the horns. Kind of interested in, in the proposal. I am somewhat concerned, I, I'm, as you all know, a retired police officer from, from the town of Enfield. I have about 30 years as a law enforcement officer, I'm currently working in a small department in Mass. I also have some experience in, in school security, was a campus safety director at a private school in Connecticut. The only concern I have is we're talking about putting retired police officers as security guards. And, I'm 55 years old, and concern I would have is, is the, the physical ability of somebody who's a retired police officer. In, in the town of Enfield, there's a minimum age typically of about 50 before you can retire. I think most officers retire well after that, unless they have another position lined up. So I guess my concern is, is putting retired police officers in the position of having to protect children. A lot of these school shooters, historically have been very young, teenage males, late teens, early twenties. To be honest with you, putting somebody in my, at my age, in my condition, obviously not physically well-fit as I used to be, just putting, putting me in a position of having to defend a school against somebody who is going to be, let's face it, a lot better armed. I mean, most security guards are probably going to be carrying a, a small semi-automatic handgun, I'm assuming. Reflexes are a lot slower. As we saw in Sandy Hook, he, he had, and I won't mention his name, but he had a assault type of rifle, I guess they, they like to call it, and some, semi-automatic handguns as well. Somebody like that coming into a school building with that type of firepower against even the best condition, the best trained police officer, that police officer's going to be at a extreme disadvantage. You take that to, to the level of, of a retired police officer, I, I'm just a little nervous, I don't want, in other words, I'm just concerned about a false sense of security. I want to make sure that if we, if we implement this, that we're putting the best person, the best possible people in those positions to, to protect the kids. And that's the only thing I'm concerned about, is I think the intention is good, I'm not sure it's the best, best thing that can be done. I personally was glad to see that some of the other proposals were considered, the one being the school resource officer in every building. I was a, a part-time SRO, it's a great program, had tremendous success with it here in Enfield, and I think everybody can agree on that. Obviously, there are some problems with that, you know, the one, the chief address being the time. The other, the other issue is putting police officers in the schools on a rotating basis. Personally, I think that's something that could probably be worked out. I understand that, that there may have been a proposal, I don't know if it was officially put forth to anybody among the police department for something along those lines. So, like I said, my only concern is that we put the best condition, best possible people out there protecting the kids. But once again, I mean, I'm glad to see you're considering, when I first heard about this proposal, I thought it was strictly, we're going to put armed guards in the schools, and to see that you've taken an all-hazards approach as far as addressing environmental design concerns and things like that, that's great, because unfortunately, as one of my recent trainings said, we've, over the last 30, 40 years, we've made sure that our schools are fireproof. And we've taken care of that end of it, but unfortunately, in making buildings fireproof, we've kind of lost some of the other stuff as far as building safety. So it's, it's nice to see, and hopefully, maybe building codes can be amended, either statewide or locally, to address some of those concerns as well. As I was told, we haven't had a child die in a school fire in, I believe, 50 years, so I guess we've done a pretty good job there. And now we just need to take it to the next level as far as trying to, I don't know if we'll ever eliminate school shootings, but certainly make them a lot less common. I mean, if one every 25 years happens, it's too much, so. Just kudos to you guys, good job, and, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I, I think, we'll bring your questions to the chief, and I think, keep in mind that part of it is tied into being, we look at it almost like a, a last step there, that the prevention things that we've put in, the hardening, the, the procedures to keep people out that don't belong in there, will cause that delay, and I, we think the armed security officers like that, that last piece of defense to, to keep somebody out. We're also banking on that they'll, that the time, the delay that people, that the hardening will cause, and that person will cause, even the thought of having to confront somebody will cause, will give the police time to get, get to the schools.
Right. And one thing I will say, if, if it's, gets out in the public, that all of our schools are protected by an armed person, I think, you know, the thing with most of these bad guys, they're going to look for an easy target, and that's why this guy picked an elementary school, because it was an easy target. So, if, if it's, you know, been well-publicized, you guys are, are trying to do something, I'm sure this will be all over the news, I saw it on one of the news stations here. So, from that standpoint, you know, hopefully, if somebody has ill intent, they'll go somewhere else, and hopefully they're as well-prepared as we will be, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Pat, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the board about security?
Mr. Chair, I have a statement from someone who will not be here because of a class.
That's fine, go right ahead.
It's from Judy Apurizzi De Roche. Her comments, because she's at class tonight and couldn't be here. "I do not support armed security in elementary schools. I don't care if it's a member of the Enfield Police Department or state police. I view armed security in our schools as much of a challenge to the mentally ill and stupid, and stupid as a deterrent. I recognize there is a difference between the mentally ill and the stupid, can't fix stupid, and the issue of how the mentally ill are treated and serviced is too long to discuss here. But in my opinion, guns in schools will not prevent someone determined to do something horrific from doing it. As a parent, if my children were still school-age and attending public schools, and my school system decided to put armed security in their school, I would immediately withdraw them and put them in private school or homeschool them while I sold my house and moved. Guns have no place in education."
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment or ask questions of the board about the, any of the thing that we presented, or any questions that you may have about security? There being none, I think I'd just remind you that there are meetings coming up, which you can take part, both council meetings and board meetings. Also, the, the date of the security conversation, the community conversation on security is the 27th, and, and I assume Dr. Schuman will get the place out by tomorrow, we can bring that up as an agenda item tomorrow and get that out there, so the public knows that. We're interested in hearing what you say. I don't know that, I, I don't think we're, we're, personally, I'm not trying to convince anybody of, of, of taking a particular stand or not, I can only share when we get to board comments, how I've come to my decisions and, and how I feel about this. And I think all of us look at this as a, it's been an individual challenge, I think, as we, as we all look at this, and it's a, it's a personal challenge to look at it, and I think all of these board members have the same view. We all look at these kids, they're yours or somebody else's, they're our kids, and we want to do whatever we can to protect them. We would love it that we didn't have this, have to have this discussion. I would love to be talking to you about improving reading and math scores, that would be a joy tonight, rather than talking about an active shooter. But we didn't go looking for it, it came our way, and I think we're, we're just trying to make the best decision we can in the interest of our kids. At this point, I'm going to go to board member comments, and, Peter, I always start with Jen, so I'm going to the other end of the table here.
Last time you did start with me, I remembered, but.
Okay.
No, it's all right, I'll start, because.
Did you fart, though, last time?
That was for a vote, I, oh, yes I did. Okay. First of all, from now on, when we get a presentation, I want a hard copy, something in front of me. This, that was different than what we had at the last meeting, when we had the joint commission, a meeting. It wasn't radically different, but it was different enough where it was difficult to follow through. And also, I, I think it's time, when we're ready to go to the next agenda, I would rather see us move to the next agenda, rather than the chairperson commenting his own personal comments. If you want to make those during board comments, fine, but I, I really, you do this quite often, and I, I really don't think you should be doing that as chairperson. Okay, as far as the, what we just had, it seems really strange that in some ways, I, I do agree with, with Joyce and Judy on the same issue. Our town was formed in, in 1680, we had our first teacher in, I think, 1702 or 1703. It's been 310 years, and we haven't had any armed security in our buildings. I still think, the three choices that we have, one of them is to remain and have the schools function the way they have in the past. You're going to find people, obviously, that don't want any guns on anybody in the building, and I think that's a legitimate point of view. I think the proposed plan with retirees, I think as Mr. Droning pointed out, the, the physical readiness, the training, and everything else like that, although it's nice to have somebody there, I don't think they're going to be efficient, as efficient, as if you had a regularly-trained officer who can move twice as fast as some of us can move now. Whether or not they, they would be full-time SORs, I, I realize that that's probably not a possibility, but getting some of these officers in there on a part-time basis, I think would be good. Just the fact that, knowing that there is an officer in that building, and there's a cruiser sitting out in front, would, I think, make somebody think twice. So I, I, I think it, this committee that we have, I think at some point in time in the near future, you should sit down with the police, the police officers, and hear what they have to say, what they're proposing, and it may make some sense, I think. And then the, that would be, and we could probably go with like a hybrid plan, part retirees, part police officers, mix it up. There's a lot of other things I think we can do with, than what the committee came up with. I applaud you on the time and effort that you put into it, but time and effort doesn't necessarily mean the plan is what's best for the kids. As far as the continuity, or having, you made some statements about if we use random officers, that the familiarity in the building wouldn't be there. I'm not so concerned about familiarity, I'm concerned about the safety of the kids. I don't care if, if, if an officer or a, a armed guard ever talks to anybody in there, as long as I know they're doing their first job, which is to protect the kids. After that, everything else would be nice. So you can look for the nice people, but first and foremost, we're there to protect I think some of the things that, exploring further ways, or further things that we have to do in the future, I don't know exactly what you guys have discussed in this, in the committee, but when you look at, what I've known so far is we're, we're taking the school day, from the time the kids come into the building until the time the kids leave the building, and this is the solution that we've come up with. But when you look at things in the future, you still have things, if, if you're going to be serious about this thing, protecting those kids getting on and off the buses every morning, that's where you're going to have the largest collection of kids every single day. You're going to have all kinds of activities before and after, mostly after school. You're going to have assemblies, programs, drama club and things like that, you're going to have sporting events out on the fields. Now if you're going to take, and take the program that you're proposing right now, and carry it out there, to, which I would think you would have to do, if you're truly saying we're doing this to protect the kids, then the cost is just going to multiply even more Strategies to buy time, I think, obviously, if there's nobody there, you're going to have to wait for a radio call or a phone call. If you have a hired, retired police officer there, hopefully that person will be quick enough to get the call in, and then do whatever he or she can do. If you have a trained officer there, I think that is probably going to be the maximum security that we have with anybody who can do something at that particular point in time, to cause the least amount of damage and the most amount of time for reinforcements to come in. So I, I would really like to see some kind of hybrid program going on here, with both regular police officers, and I, I think they'd probably be willing to, I think, I, I know they would like to sit down and talk with you guys, and for you to listen to what they have to offer. There are other things, the weaponry is, is just going to be a massive difference. So I guess what I'm saying is, I, I'm, if I, if I had my brothers, I'd like to see things go on as they have the last 310 years. I'm not in favor of just having retired officers come in. To me, that's an X on their forehead. The least that I, I would be accepted, accept, find acceptable, would be have a combination of, of regular officers working there on a rotational basis with some retired officers. So those are my comments for now, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Tina?
As most of you know, in our meetings, Jen and I really struggle with this decision, and we talk about, you know, going forward like we always did, and maintaining a status quo, because the probabilities of something like this happening is small. But then I have to step back, and Jen steps back, and December 14th changed the way we look at the world in general. It's not the same putting your kids on the bus anymore, whether you live 50 miles from it, or 500 miles from Newtown. We're relying on professional people who are maybe are a little closer to what goes on in this town, that we would like to think doesn't. So, I think it's definitely a struggle that we all have as board members. I have some of the same concerns, some of the concerns that Pat brought in, were some of the concerns that we've been talking about. There's a cost of doing something, whether people feel it's, it's over the top, but then we've had those conversations, the cost of doing nothing, and the cost of doing nothing is a child. And you can't put a price tag on our children, and I know it's definitely a struggle for all of us, so hearing input from the public and parents and anyone who lives in the town is always helpful for us. But it's definitely a big decision, and we want it to be the right decision for the families and, and everyone who lives in, in Enfield.
Thank you, Tina. Vinnie?
Well, first I want to start off with something happy. Enfield High is playing Weston, down by New Haven tonight, in basketball, men's basketball. They're a little behind at halftime, but good luck to them. Tonight's comments, Pat, as you always do, you put things very good. I mean, you, you have a way with words. I think if schools were built today, that they are built in a way that security is the foremost nowadays. We don't live in a time like we used to, many years ago, when I went to elementary school, or went to high schools, or you, some years ago, but times have changed, and we know that, not just December 14th, but in general, times have changed. Things are not the same way as, as we were kids. You're not as safe anymore, you don't feel safe as, as you used to do many, many years ago. I think this committee that was put together by the town council, and, and the board, and other members in the community, we struggled with that, and we had to come up with this decision on these recommendations. We have We have to do what's best for these kids in this town. We have to take the precautions. We have to do whatever we can. And we kind of like, I'm not going to say not worry about the cost. Yeah, we got to worry about the cost. But like Tina just said, we can't put a price tag on our kids. We have to do whatever we can to protect. Some people are saying we're going overboards. Maybe we are. I would feel better by going overboard and having these kids safe, and having a reaction right away, instead of waiting. And the police department is a good police department in this town. Their active shooter skills are very good. Over the last couple of years, we've seen a couple of demonstrations, and they're great. And they're very well-trained. Let's hope they never have to use it. But I don't want them waiting that three or four minutes and seeing what can happen in that very, very short period of time. Again, we struggled with the recommendations. I'm confident in our police chief, in his recommendations, and I support him in that. And some people might not agree with me, or with the committee, in having these, these personnel in the, in the schools. I do. We're taking every precaution we can, by hardening the buildings, and having that last step, make sure that we can prevent or delay to something that bad can happen in these schools. Let's hope it never does, but that's it.
Okay, I'm going to go now. Actually, a comment that I actually would like to agree with Peter, and say I wish we could go on with this, the way we've done it for 300 and whatever years, because it's been great. Okay, we haven't had to worry about that. And like the rest of you, I've struggled with it, because I, you know, Peter and I worked in schools for 35 or 40 years, and that wasn't the worry that we had. We had other kinds of worries, but nothing like that, and nothing of that severity. But wrestling with the, what happened, if you talked to me about this before the 14th, I would have said, "No, I think we're overreacting." Okay? Since the 14th, I just can't say that anymore. And I don't, you know, the chief talks about, it's almost like gambling. And, you know, if I'm going down to the casino, I'm gambling with my own money. But I just, just, I just don't want to take a chance and gamble with somebody's kids, my kids or their kids. I just don't want to do it. Is it slight? Maybe, but who am I to judge that? And I, I think that, you know, my preferred way would be to have the police office, but I understand where the chief is coming from. There aren't enough slots to deal with that. And I think, the choice, I think, as Pat said, is to do nothing, or to come up with a plan that we think would, would, would assist us and, and provide enough time for the police to get on scene. And I guess that's what I'm, I'm willing to go with. And I think it's, at this point in time, it's, it's the best recommendation. If somebody comes up with something different, that's fine. But as of now, and all we've heard from the chief, and from, from his, his folks, is that this is a plan that will make a difference with the kids. And I think, I'm, I'm willing to support that. Go ahead.
You know, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of effort, to really absorb the knowledge that we have had to address and understand, and make part of who we are over these past couple of months. These are things that no one wants to happen, no one believes they're happening, and no one understands why, if we have a mentality that is within the norm. We're dealing with people who don't think in those realms. And I think that, you know, sitting through and listening, I know there's people in our community that deal with things on a daily basis, that are beyond what we deal with on the Board of Ed. And I think we need to listen to them, we need to understand what they need, and we need to respond to that. And I will tell you, the participation in the active shooter program, I was always, I keep telling Tim, on December 14th, I knew what we had to do. But sitting in that chair as the secretary, the affirmation and the understanding of what it takes to keep a school secure, really came home to me. And I can tell you, I can't tell you how long three minutes is, when you're waiting for help, and you are absolutely helpless to do anything to prevent something. And I am in support of the, the chief's plan. I think that if he has other things that he needs to deal with, with his workforce and unions, that that's his responsibility, not ours on the Board of Education. Thank you.
I'm going to agree with many here on the board. I'm often reminded that times are different. It's not the same world that we lived in 20 years ago. It's not the same world we lived in three months ago. Things change. And I, I agree with many on the board, when it comes to the security of our kids. When I was in the military, one of the things that we were trained in was physical security. And I, I'm very familiar with, with a lot of the procedures that they're discussing, and I agree with them. I mean, we dealt with the public on a daily basis, in a very politically-charged atmosphere. It was a nuclear submarine. And it was a profile ship, which means we had a lot of VIPs onboard. So, I understand transferring that over to the public school system. The chief has been ahead of the bell curve with this stuff for a very long time. Two years ago, I went to my first active-duty training, active shooter training, excuse me. So, he's been ahead of this. And when he recommends something, he takes it very seriously. I'm going to agree with him. The idea that we're going to stick a Walmart security guard in the school building is not what's going to happen, and characterizing that is wrong. It's, the idea that we're going to have a screening process, that's going to take anything but the most professional people, regardless of who they are, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that. That, that's saying that our chief won't do their job, our superintendent won't do the job. That's saying that the mayor won't do the job. It's saying everyone involved won't do the job. And I have a much higher esteem for those people and their job. If you're saying that a police officer is super-qualified to do that, then I think the top cop is in a position to make a judgment as to whether or not he can hire someone who can do the same job physically, and meet all the requirements. I think it's a very disingenuous argument to sit here and say that, well, unless it's a certain type of person, that we can't put them there. Two months ago, when I, before I was placed back on the board, I talked to you guys, and I said, "No option should be taken off the table." And none should. I believe that this is a comprehensive security plan. I recognize it as such. That makes it a good plan. I also, I mean, it's not just one issue. We're addressing the buildings. We're addressing access to the buildings. We're addressing multiple, multiple layers of issues to make it a safer place. We're not just putting, as some people have called it, a rent-a-cop in the building with a gun. And it's a mischaracterization of that. We're not putting a jackboot thug in the building with a gun. That, too, is a mischaracterization. We're not putting a Walmart greeter at the door, either. It's kind of more in-between. Think of it as Mr. Rogers, who's packing. He'll fit in with the school system, he'll be highly-trained, he'll be very qualified, he'll meet the requirements that we need him to be, to be met. And I don't have a problem with that. Again, characterizing it as anything else is just, just doing it a disservice. So, long and short, I'm in support of it. The chief says it's a good idea, our public safety officer says it's a good idea, I say it's a good idea.
Joyce?
Yes, I'm turning on my...
Very good.
As you are probably aware, I have watched CTN on a regular basis, and watched about 50% of the testimony to the three separate committees, and also to a fourth committee, who is, was the task force set up by the governor, who is supposed to report on Friday of this week. The others are still wavering as to whether they're going to report before the end of the session. But I listened to the testimony of a number of people who are considered experts in the field. And one point that kept coming up on a regular basis was, "Don't rush." And if you're putting an armed anybody in the school, that that person should be fully-trained to handle the education process, not simply be somebody there as either a greeter or an armed person. My concern about armed persons in the school, from a personal basis, not from all that testimony, is that by introducing someone with a gun in an elementary school, you've introduced the concept of fear, that now I have to be afraid. And I know you're frowning, Vinnie, but I'm concerned about that. If we need somebody with a gun, then, my goodness, I'm, I must not be safe. I've got, you know, you know? And yet, the parents I talked to at a recent PTO meeting indicated that they felt that their children were safe. And yes, they did identify the fact that you increased the quote, "hardening of the building." But, and because everything else had been in executive session, I couldn't specifically say what this plan was going to include, but that they felt safe, and that their children felt safe in their schools. I don't want to introduce the anxiety of having to worry. And I know you can tell the person that, okay, he's here to protect you, so you don't have to worry. But I don't think that will be the end result. You've introduced fear, in my opinion. My perception of the committee is that certain members, probably before it was even formed, already knew what they wanted to do, and just had to convince, convince the rest that armed guards in the schools were necessary. The odds, as I know, it's going, it's low, it's probably you'll get hit by lightning long before any school is attacked. That's one of the testimonies, by the way. That, that was not my opinion. And that our biggest problem may not be the require to have somebody who can shoot somebody, but rather to spend more time and energy on being sure that mental health problems are addressed throughout the community, and even in our schools. Now, that is one of the important discussions that's happening on the Children's Committee, and also on the Health Committee in the legislature at this time. The fact that we've got all of these groups studying the problem, coming up with potential solutions, I'm not sure we should be the first out the gate, that we should have spent a different kind of time reviewing what we wanted to do, and not what appears to me to be a rush. Thank you.
Like Tina said, as a mom and having children in the school system, I had a really hard time, you know? I came right from work once into our meeting, and it was an executive session, and was told to me, and I pretty much just sat there in shock for the next half hour, just listening, because this, it's not what I anticipated. And, you know, I've only really been able to talk to board members about it, so I've had a, a difficult time digesting it. But the, since I've been on the board, the thing that I've learned is that you have to always take the recommendations of the professionals, because they're the ones that know the best. And the chief of police and the public safety officer are the ones that are the professionals. They obviously know more about that, what's going on in town criminal-wise than I do. And I like living in my quiet side of town, and not having to deal with any of that. But since they realized it, this is the recommendation, that is truly the, the reason why I'm supporting it. But as a mother, I wish that I didn't have to.
At this point, we have executive session here, but I'm not sure that we have the need to go into it, Dr. Schuman.
Thank you, Schuman. No, at this time, the information we thought we may have for the board to consider an executive session is not available, and so we do not need to go into executive session this evening.
Okay. Just a reminder that you're going to get a notice about a change in the budget presentation date, which is going to be on the 25th, and that the meeting for the, I remind the public that the meeting for the security, for the Joint Security Committee is going to be on the 27th, and we'll get a date and time out as soon as possible.
We'll be sure to get that out as soon as possible.
Vinnie?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Vinnie, seconded by Donna. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're adjourned. Thank you, folks.